It is 7:03. I will now call to order the note number six, meeting of the Amity City Council. Please rise and join me in slinging the flag. I would like to give you the flag of the United States of America and the Republic of Washington, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Counselor Melissa, or or this, as a counsel, as a counsel, Caleb Shute.
Here.
Counselor Alex Homs, your counsel standing partner.
Here.
Johnson, Johnson. Did you give your essay lead?
Yep, I sit here.
We are ready. Here. Let's make sure that we can get our consent papers. We'll start off tonight with the consent agenda. We have before us the budget versus actuals in minutes from the regular October meeting in October. What a session.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second. I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any whoops, please signify by saying no. We'll move on to citizen comments and questions. This is an opportunity to present items off on our regular agenda. Please state your name and address and limit your comments to three minutes. We'll start this evening with the Amity County Sheriff's Office report. Deputy Sam White, you're to join us.
Um, I don't think they should be on, which they do. I mean, there's schools in session, we have undershered battle in town. Uh, we've hired more guys, more deputies, it's in the process of work, so we should have more people on the road. Uh, I would imagine probably next three months, absolutely a permanent day shift position sign that basketball field. So, um, the other thing, I'm gonna, I'll leave some business cards over here with Tasha. Uh, and if anybody wants to come do a ride along, uh, feel free to send me the video. Get attention, and then you guys more or less come out. So if you've never been on a ride along, uh, I would recommend it. It's not something guaranteed, but you never know, so all you need is a little Tasha.
Any questions for my councilman? Thank you. Um, and then do we have anyone from Dig with us this evening? Can I ask what more asks did you make to give any data fees?
Um, we planted 200 bulbs in front of City Hall and at the corner with the arch on Trade and Nursery over the weekend. And Dig is starting along on the planning process of the Duffville. So the next meeting that we're notified of, I have a little bit councilman.
Thank you. Um, and then do we have comments from the audience tonight?
Yes, I'm moving.
State your name and address in three minutes, please.
Uh, John White, uh, 304, Third South Trade Street, uh, Number Two, Andy Oregon. Um, new to town, hello everybody, uh, nice to be here at my first city council meeting. Uh, I love meeting everybody here in town and, um, engaging in friendly conversations with anybody I can come across. Um, recently I went for a walk around town for my first time, um, uh, and was taking pictures of properties. Uh, into maybe, you know, I, I rent in here in town, been here about six months now, and I'd like to maybe buy a property. A lot of our, um, side streets here turn into dirt roads, um, have confusing transitions into driveways or side streets. Um, there's, there's, there's one between here and Donald Judd, I mean, it's a street that's kind of confusing. Uh, sometimes you end up going across street tracks. Anyway, I was walking down a street that didn't have a sidewalk on the side, had to step away. Uh, was a big, um, truck, I think it was a waste management truck came by, a lady came out, uh, wanted to, I thought she was selling firewood, wanted to know what I was doing, and I said, oh, if you own this property, I'm trying to take a picture of it. Oh, no, that's the property next to me, you have to go down the road or whatever. And so I continued down the road, and she started to yell at me, and I turned around, you know, so I'm, ma'am, shut up. And, um, and then I just continued on, took my picture, uh, went across streets, took another picture of another property I was interested in. Thought if I could go down the phone, tell the man about these properties he wants me to check out. I have access to the GIS system, I can find instantly woman's, what, what the tax situation is. Uh, continue my walk, I'm trying to lose 10 pounds, and about a half hour later, uh, Officer of the Sheriff's Department stops me, and, um, uh, calls me a criminal a bunch of times, um, and then, um, I go back to my house, and I either knock the door, I answer the door, agrees with me, my rights tells me I'm, uh, in violation, I have a criminal trespass attitude taken. Now I have, uh, I'm trying to, I'm trying to be cool with gunsmith, and I'm trying to apply for the, the, the school system. Um, that's, both of those are basically out because now I have a court page for criminal trespasses. I'm just, I'm allowed to walk, an easement, this lady didn't let me walk down her side of the street, she, you know, I, I, and said so. If, 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 if I was anywhere I should have been, I, I got out of there, and all of that is legal. And, and, and still, I, I kind of feel like I've been over policed, and I told the officer, you know, I'm afraid of going walking around now, because I feel like moving here is asking. So I was just hoping the city council could maybe send a letter or something to the sheriff's office, say, you know, uh, we here in Amity like people to go for a walk, and, um, um, maybe Officer Verser could review the, um, uh, legal code when it comes to, you know, walking on easements or nearby easements, or leaving, you know, somebody's, uh, descending to the other property when they're shut in. Was very interested in her relationship situation, I'm not interested in any of that. Uh, I, I, I just would like the city council to please make it a little bit nicer and safer for me to just walk around the town without being harassed. I understand officers, I understand, they want to do a good job, uh, I also understand that, uh, they're shut ins, and that a friendly person can, should just be able to get some exercise, that was it, thank you very much.
Well, I appreciate that you're here, we like people that want to come and be part of the conversation and speak with us. And, um, if you haven't already, I think that, um, you know, reaching out to the sheriff's office in general, everyone has that hair up there. As a city council, I think you made, um, a really good recommendation about the way that we can reach out and state our concerns, but, um, just personally from you, I think that to escalate it yourself, it would be reaching out to the sheriff's office. But, but we hear you can sign down, thank you for bringing it to us. Do we have any ones in the audience tonight that would like to make a comment, or anyone on Zoom? Seeing none, we will move into old business, and tonight we have none, um, into new business. Our first item is presentation of the audit report. Do we have?
Yep, I'm here, Russ.
Hello.
Who is, so our auditor is Russ Reese, his, his Zoom names is calling mine.
Oh, you are not calling them, sorry.
Can everybody see me? I can see everybody here.
We have also, we have you projected on a screen for our audience as well.
Perfect.
Yeah, I'm going to give you floor, and we all have a copy, well, we have the audience in front of us.
Perfect, um, again, Russ Reese with Gerard Sieber Pollard CPA, uh, pleased to, pleased to present the results of the City of Amity's, uh, audit for fiscal year ended June 30, 2024. I thought what I'd do is cover the independent auditors' report. I'm gonna cover, uh, just, uh, two of the basic government-wide financial statements, the statement of net position and the statement of activities for the city. Um, and then I'm going to cover the, again, the single audit report, uh, again, because the city expended more than $750,000 of federal assistance this last year. Uh, besides having the audit of its, uh, financial statements, we also performed an audit of the major program, uh, of which the city had one major program this last year, um, so there was, um, there was, um, two additional reports issued in the back, and then again, our Oregon Minimum Standards Report, uh, in the, in the way back of the report, which I will cover too. So I'm gonna quickly flip over to page two, which is the independent auditors' report. City of Amity is receiving an unmodified or clean opinion on its financial statements, again, consistent with prior years. Uh, in looking in the opinions subsection of the independent auditors' report, in our opinion, the financial statements referred to above present fairly in all material respects, the respective financial position of the governmental activities, the business type activities, and each major fund of the City of Amity as of June 30, 2024, and the respective changes in financial position, and where applicable, cash flows thereof for the year then ended in accordance with U.S. GAAP. So again, the paper is, again, is receiving an unmodified or clean opinion. Uh, we did not note any internal control issues during the course of the audit. Uh, the information appeared, um, complete and accurate, reconciliations were done timely and accurately. So again, I'm, I'm pleased to report, uh, again, an unmodified or clean opinion. I'm flipping over to page four. The audit report will be dated as of the management rep letter date, which will be dated today. They will issue the management rep letter report to management, and they will sign off on it, and that'll give us the dates to go ahead and date not only this report, but our single audit reports and our minimum standard report in the back of the, of the audit report. Um, I'm gonna just quickly turn to page 10, which is the first government-wide financial statement. And again, the statement of net position. This government-wide presentation collapses all of the governmental activities of the city and the business-type activities of the city, and presents them in two separate columns with a total. Due to time constraints, I'm simply gonna focus on the total column in this first basic financial statement. Uh, so again, the statement of net position is in assets, less deferred outflows, less liabilities, and less deferred inflows. Results in net position or equity of the city. So again, as of June 30, 2024, the city had total assets of less than $23 million. Deferred outflows related to pension items, again, Oregon PERS of 292,000. Under liabilities, again, we have current and long-term liabilities. Uh, so as of June 30, the district had, or the city had total liabilities of $10,426,165, and deferred inflows related to, again, Oregon PERS pension items of 150,471. Take our assets and deferred outflows, and we subtract our liabilities and deferred inflows, and that's the, the net position or equity of the city, again, as of June 30, 2024. Grand total was $12,670,919. I'm now gonna flip to the second basic financial statement, uh, the statement of activities. And again, the statement of activities is presented in a way, it's fairly unique, in that we start off with expenses. We then apply program revenues against those expenses to come up with a net expense. And then we apply general revenues against those net expenses to come up with the overall change in net position for the year. And again, this is allocated between governmental activities and our business-type activities. Again, business-type activities include water and fuel activities. So I'm gonna focus again on just the grand totals, which is the combination of both the governmental activities and the business-type activities. So again, for the year ended June 30, the city incurred total expenses of just under 2.5 million. Through that, we apply fees, fines, and charges for services of about 1.6 million. We apply operating grants and contributions of just under 5,000, and capital grants and contributions of just a little over $2 million to come up with, uh, total expenses less program revenues of about, just under 1.2 million dollars. We then apply general revenues against that total, which includes property taxes, franchise taxes, intergovernmental, um, intergovernmental payments, and miscellaneous revenues. The total general revenues totaled $1,018,832, though taking an overall positive change in net position for the year for the city of $2,209,435. So that, those are the, uh, basically the first two government-wide financial statements that are prepared. I'm not gonna cover the, uh, the traditional presentation, but you'll notice on the traditional presentation that there's reconciliation between the fund presentation and the government-wide, um, presentation, pages 12 and 13. Uh, flipping over, starting on page 17, we have our required footnote disclosures, and I can tell you that for this year, we did not have any new footnote disclosures. So footnote disclosures continue on until pages, until page 33. What I do wanna cover is the results of the single audit, which start on page, let me flip over here to page 40. For page 40, we have our scheduled expenditures of federal awards for the year. We have two programs, uh, again, and only one of the programs qualified as a major program, and that was, again, uh, the U.S. Department of Agriculture's Water and Waste Disposal Systems Rural Communities Program, CFDA number 10.760. So again, under this federal program, the city recognized federal expenditures for the year of approximately $4.6 million. The only other federal program where monies were expended was under the coronavirus state and local fiscal revenue funds program, uh, of only about 169,000. So total federal expenditures for the year incurred by the city, $4,814,851. And what I will tell you is, beginning on pages 42 and going all the way through to page 46, we have two additional reports that we issue as a result of the single audit. The first report is called a Yellow Book Audit, which is a, a report on internal controls and compliance over financial statements, over audit of financial statements performed in accordance with government auditing standards. And I can tell you that, uh, this report is also a clean or unmodified opinion. We did not see any internal control issues or compliance issues as it pertains to government auditing standards in the audit of the financial statements, uh, this last fiscal year. So again, clean opinion on the, on the Yellow Book Audit, or the Yellow Book Report. And then starting on page 44, we have our additional, one additional report, which is our independent auditors' report on compliance for each major program, and on internal control over compliance required by the uniform grant guidance. So again, this pertains to the major program that was tested, which again was the, uh, the, uh, the $4.6 million expenditure program. And I can also tell you that with this program, the results were the same, unmodified, clean opinion. We did not find any internal control issues or compliance issues in regards to expanding of that federal system, or the federal assistance program. There's a nice, uh, recap of the results of the financial payment audit and the single audit contained on page 47. So again, on page 47, we have our summary of auditors', auditor's results, which again, uh, identifies that we have expressed an unmodified or clean opinion on the financial statements. Uh, there are no significant deficiencies reported in internal controls over the financial statements, and also no material weaknesses were reported. We did not, uh, identify any non-compliance with, uh, which would be material to the financial statements of the City of Amity. Uh, we did not identify any significant deficiencies, significant deficiencies in internal control over major federal programs. The auditors' report on compliance with the major federal award programs expressed an unmodified or clean opinion. Uh, there were no audit findings that were required to be disclosed. Uh, we did identify the program tested as a major program was the Water and Waste Disposal Systems for Rural Communities Program. Uh, the threshold for distinguishing type A and type B, which again identifies major versus non-major programs, was $750,000. And then finally, the City of Amity was determined to be a low-risk auditee, uh, because of the fact that the city has undergone two prior single audits, and those have both been clean. So when you undertake the two prior single audits, we have clean results. The, the fact that this year, under the, under the single audit, the city was determined to be a low-risk auditee, which, which in theory reduces our testing threshold, uh, because of that designation. Finally, I'm just gonna quickly cover the Oregon Minimum Standards Report, starting on pages 48, and concluding on pages 49. Uh, again, besides doing the financial statement audit, the single audit, we're also required to use the compliance testing as required by Oregon Minimum Standards in regards to different positive and public funds, any indebtedness limitations, budgeting, insurance, programs funded from outside sources, highway revenues, the authorized investment of surplus funds in public contracts and purchasing. And, uh, the states said in connection with our testing, nothing came to our attention that caused us to believe that the city was not in substantial compliance with certain provisions of laws, regulations, contracts, and grants, surveillance of organized statutes, and the OARs that pertained specifically to Oregon Minimum Standards. So again, no compliance matters noted during the course of this additional testing. And under internal control, the financial reporting, during the course of our testing, if we did note any internal control issues that rose to the level of a significant deficiency or material weakness, we would disclose the construction. And again, we're pleased to report that we did not identify any issues in those areas. So again, the city is receiving a clean opinion on its financial statement audit, it's receiving a clean opinion on its single audit, and it's also receiving a clean opinion on it, uh, the results of the org, testing under Oregon Minimum Standards. I'd like to thank Nathan and Natasha for their help this year, uh, in performing the audit. Uh, again, the records look fantastic, uh, reconciliations were done timely and accurately, and again, no issues noted during the course of this audit. Uh, but at this point, I was just gonna open it up to any questions that anyone may have. Um, the only, the only additional steps that need to be completed at this point is the preparation of the data collection form, which goes with the single audit, we'll have that done next week. And, uh, the city has, I think, nine months from year end to get that submitted to the Federal Clearing House. Um, that'll be performed, prepared by our firm by next week, and it should be ready to go within the next couple of weeks. So, uh, that's the only outstanding deliverable on the engagement this year. Uh, at this point, I'm gonna open up, are there any questions that I can field at this point?
Any questions from the council?
No, I'd just like to say thank you, Tasha.
Thank you to our staff, and thank you to you for your work. Um, it's always great to be able to see this in front of us and hear that everything is as it should be. It's reassuring, so thank you, everyone.
Thank you very much, again, have a great rest of the week, and, uh, we'll get this all wrapped up for you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, so even though they have that one outstanding deliverable, um, we can approve, I don't mean approve, I mean. So I would ask if we have a motion for that?
I move to approve the auditor's findings, approve Amity's fiscal year 2023 to 2024 audit.
I have a motion and a second to approve the auditor's findings and approve the Amity's fiscal year 2023 to 2024 audit. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any whoops, please signify by saying no. Our next item of business is the Arkel Waterline Rent Agreement Amendment Number Three. So we have the background here, and this is just coming with the actual amendment to our original contract. The changes are shown in underlining, bold, striking, so we have an extension through October 1st of 2025. Um, and then the addition of any remaining funds may be used to repair existing stormwater infrastructure and/or offset the cost of re-giving Goucher Street after the water line replacement work is completed. Um, and then again, just, um, changing of the things. Ethan, do you wanna get any more of a rundown?
Um, not specifically, no. Um, the completion deadline, just noted June 30th, 2025, but the, the contract expires three months after the completion deadline, on October 1st. So the construction has to be done June 30th, and then it gives us three months to make sure the paperwork's in order. But I, I believe we're, we're well in that way. Um, this amendment was largely inspired because we wanted to use some of the remaining funds in that grant for, uh, repaving Goucher Street, and we're well into the rainy season now, which makes paving a little bit harder. And, and so we asked our representatives for a six-month extension so we could perform that work once it dries out. And, and everybody was supportive, so, uh, thank you to our representatives, and, uh, thank you to the contractor for being willing to adjust so, so many change orders as we try to use up all of the grant funding, uh, to, to make the improvements as, as substantial as possible.
And also the, uh, pretty cool stormwater needs that were found as we replaced the water line.
Yes, uh, they found a, a pretty sizable hole in the culvert in the bottom of Goucher Street. And so, um, it's one of those that it's not gonna collapse or anything, right? And it's still structurally sound, but, um, we need it have addressed, and so we're planning to have it re-lined.
So my question is, um, are they planning on doing any covering of what they dug up on Goucher as part of the original plan, or is that going to remain as it is, and then the, maybe be the only way they're gonna get that covered?
You mean like how it's gravel now in the long spots? Yeah, um, as part of it, we did. Well, let me ask, what would be council's preference? I'd say our, our thinking was to allow them to leave it gravel until they pay, because they are going to dig down the top 12 inches, uh, and then repave the entire street. Um, and that saves some money, right? Because if they're not willing to restore the entire thing as they go, they can just leave it until they, until they dig up the entire street, and then they pay.
But do we have the funding for the entire street? Because I thought we did until the beginning.
We do, we definitely do, um, for the entirety of their construction project. We, we weren't sure how far paving, how far that funding was going to go. The, the change order assessment that we got from the contractor was, again, very pleasantly surprising. Um, they've been great to work with, um, consistently delivering things at, at very low cost. Or, or not very low cost, but relatively low cost. Um, in fact, I, I don't know if I noted it fully in here, um, one of the things that I wanted to request as part of this agenda item was potentially authority to spend out the rest of that $2 million grant. Um, because even, I believe even after the paving, if my math is mathing right, um, we're still gonna be at like 1.7, 1.75 of, of it spent. Um, so we'll still have another 200,000 to spend. Uh, our, our current thinking is to run six-inch water lines in Barney and Goucher, or Barney and Church. But we're, we're figuring out if, if there's money for that, or if we need to adjust our thinking smaller, so.
Uh, so back to Counselor Nick's original question, and then your question to Council. Uh, what are, so, construction, uh, water line should be done at the end of November, and the street is torn up, like it's pretty torn up, it's pretty broken out again. But if we knew that it was ready to be repaved within three, four months' time. it was ready to repave within three, four months' time, do we want to expect funds to do temporary maintenance?
No, I just, my concern is that it's going to get done because it is torn up.
Yeah, um, yeah, so I, I think no matter what, it would need to be put back to its, you know, condition before construction or better, that the plant is like the insect dig-down hole inches, full repair of the entire.
I think we just need to make sure that we are transparent with the people of Goucher, that that is supposed to be what's going to happen, so that they're not concerned when all of the construction people care about and forgets that.
And then i- if we do not public works, uh, keep an eye on to make sure that the conditions stay safe enough, because they're navigable, but, you know, with the rains or people driving, if any of those holes get worse than they are, we need to make it safe and durable, uh, especially if there are heavy trucks on the street.
I would also add that the side streets like Barney and some of the other ones that are gravelled, should public works to infill some of the hot holes, because they're getting extra wear and tear from construction and from extra traffic on them.
Yes.
Yeah.
They're getting a lot of that. So if, yeah, if it came, you know, to, uh, the hope to replace the water lines on those adjacent streets is awesome, but regardless, they're gonna need some treatment after.
Well, it sounds like they made it to treatment before. I think it could be a few months before. A while, that's kinda the best.
Yeah, probably drop off a couple of them.
Yeah, because they're getting, the detours, they're getting a lot more traffic, and like.
Yep.
That is true. Um, so in the recommended motion, um, we did know that we need to authorize a separate motion, that we need to fully extend any remaining grant funds on products or services related to the water line replacement project. Uh, I will just say that this, you know, I'm comfortable with, obviously, we're recording on this grant, and so it will not be used for anything that isn't eligible under the criteria. Um, and the contract itself, the amendment that was before, Mr. Gordon, just the change of deals, um, in that addition.
I move to approve amendment number three for the City of Amity's grant agreement number eight zero five five, and to authorize the city administrator to fully extend any remaining grant funds on products or services related to the water line replacement.
Second. And I have a motion and a second to approve amendment number three for the City of Amity's grant agreement number eighty fifty-five, and to authorize the city administrator to fully extend any remaining grant funds on products or services related to the water line replacement. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 And opposed, please signify by saying no. Motion access. Our last item of new business is pre-implementation compliance measures in relation to, um, flood plan of management and FEMA. And I'm gonna hand this right over to you, Ethan, it's, uh, it's duty.
It, it is a duty, um, thank you. Over the last couple of months, the Federal Emergency Management Authority, FEMA, has rolled out a requirement of all communities to participate in the National Flood Insurance Program. Um, it, it's related to a lawsuit on their end around the Endangered Species Act. Um, they're, they're trying... They're trying to be, or people are trying to hold FEMA accountable for their part in essentially enabling development or supporting development in the floodplain, uh, and they're, you know, the Endangered Species Act, it is looking at the entire region, it's contributing to, or floodplain throughout the regions, throughout our region, is contributing to, uh, some of the declines of salmon, steelhead, and, and I think even ore populations. Um, and so they're, they're doing their best to, uh, to address those issues. The way that they have, have decided to do that, um, well, wait, I got, sorry, they have a long-term process that's, that they're moving through. Um, they're, they're working on a NEPA, I believe it's a environmental, essentially an environmental review, an, an environmental impact statement, um, and trying to, you know, pin down what exactly they need to do to, long-term, have sustainability for those species. Um, in the meantime, though, there's added pressure on FEMA, uh, and so they are trying to implement what they're calling pre-implementation compliance measures. So essentially temporary measures that they're asking cities and, and other jurisdictions to put into place, um, before those long-term standards are fully fleshed out.
They're requiring.
Yes, yes. It, it is their requirement, um, so they've... They've labeled them, they've labeled these as three pathways, um, largely with the Oregon, with, with Oregon's state requirements on how we can follow our developer code, there's not really three, three, uh, pathways. Um, but for the sake of, of discussion, we'll, you know, just talk about them briefly. The first is a model ordinance that essentially implies the standards of no let, no net loss in regards to undeveloped space, previous services, and vegetation. They, they get fairly specific with it, i- if you, uh, read in there, basically, if you, you know, take one square foot of floodplain, they wanna see one square foot of floodplain even come back somewhere else, they prefer you avoid it altogether. Um, there, there are also like ratios, um, like trees of a certain size, depending on where they are in relation to the floodplain, need to be replaced by sometimes like three trees or sometimes six trees for one. Um, there's a whole bunch of standards on mitigation, and, and we can dive into that more in the future as we look at actually implementing some of these standards into our development code. Um, but largely, they're trying to get to the idea of no net loss. Um, the second pathway that they've outlined, like I said, it doesn't end up being largely different, they called it a permit-by-permit approach. Um, basically, it would just have the, the city require applicants, um, proposing new development in the floodplain to perform a habitat assessment. Um, there, there's a few key, key terms in there that make me particularly nervous. Um, one of them is qualified professionals that have to be involved, there's no definition for that. Um, and so it's, they said it's up to the community to define who qualified professionals are, whether that's biologists, whether it's myself, like who? There, there's not much guidance there. Um, and, and so requiring people to do a habitat assessment, uh, is both tricky on, like who do we require somebody to go get that from, and how does the city review it? Do we have to have qualified professionals to review those habitat assessments and make sure that they were done correctly? Um, anyway, and so they were thinking of looking at it permit by permit, but ultimately, that habitat assessment is still meant to get to no net loss standard. Um, and so it... The standard stays the same. There might be slightly more flexibility with the habitat assessment, um, and it gives applicants a chance to kind of really do a deep dive and, and like look at the mitigation options. Um, however, it also could be potentially very expensive. Um, and so... Ultimately, the, the third option that, that FEMA proposed as a pick 'em as a pre-implementation compliance measure, um, was prohibition, which DLCD has since said is, is a mess in and of itself, right? That there's a lot of reasons in Oregon why we can't just prohibit development outright, um, or why we may not want to.
We will be.
And so, yes, I have a table there that goes through the mitigation measures. Um, but, so largely for us tonight, um, it largely boils down to, um... Actually, sorry, let me back up just a little bit. Um, no matter what we, no matter which pathway we choose, no matter what we want to implement, um, it's going to take time to draft and implement code, it has to go through the Planning Commission, the City Council, and DLCD before it can be fully adopted into the city's development code. Um, we will also be needing to send out like notices to each prop- affected property owner. Um, FEMA is aware that there's a process to this, they've allowed for full implementation to be done by July first, um, twenty-twenty-five. They're just hoping for us as a city council to choose, um, they say choose, uh, sorry, like I say, I, I'm not see, I, I still don't see the difference between the pathways. Um, but largely, they want us to determine our next steps and let them know by December first of this year. Um, FEMA has asked, um, that even while, even before we can fully implement a measure, uh, or, or put your development code in, that we follow that standard, no net loss, there's not really a way for the city to do that, we can't enforce anything in our development code without it being there, um, short of like a temporary moratorium or, or something else on prohibiting development for a short time period. Uh, our city attorney, while she didn't outright say, "Don't do that," she pretty close said, "Don't do that." She, she said if we, if we strongly wanted to follow FEMA's requirements and ask to the, to the letter, then we could likely find a way to legally do it. I, I've, I've seen other cities that have put in place by res- by council resolution, temporary moratoriums on floodplain development. Uh, so I think it could be done, um, probably doesn't need to, but I wanted to just put that out there, that, you know, depending on how close you wanted to follow exactly what FEMA asked, that would be one way to do it. Um... But so really tonight, we need, I, I need the city council to choose, um, what, how, how we would like to approach FEMA's requirements.
So in the recommendation, we have, um, a motion for each of those three paths. I would say we've talked about this before, and complete prohibition does not seem like something the council is comfortable with or that would be responsible or fair to move ahead of it. Um, in the beginning, I was very hesitant in acceptance of the model code, right? Because a lot of times that's just, well, this was written for everyone, it has to be all inclusive. Um, I've since then had a chance to talk with Nathan about how that really looks, and we have this forty-seven-page model code in front of us, um, but what that looks like is taking this code and putting the relevant parts into our code. So it's using it as a model, it's not saying that we're signing off on this unfinished draft, and okay, whatever it says, and here's what we're going by. It will be processed with planning issue, with public hearings, as we take what is relevant and needed to meet that no net loss goalpost and get it put into our code. Uh, essentially, all development permits or any inquiries that come to the city are on a permit-by-permit basis, like that's just how we do it. You look at it and you say, how are we gonna implement our code to do that? Uh, and so I think the staff has brought some important considerations in why a new street permit by permit might not be, um, as feasible, or as successful as it seems. I will say I'm not comfortable with what FEMA is asking us to do, I don't think it's fitting us in our position. Um, but I will also say that everyone from our county commissioners, to our state legislators, to our congressional representatives, to our governor, have all spoke through FEMA, saying you're not putting this in our position, this is not the implementation process that best suits Oregon's planning needs or the way that we can work business. Um, but the matter on the table tonight is for us to choose one of these three. So all of it enough, more discussion, more questions?
I think that, I mean, we're Oregon-driven, so you counsel, and, uh, I think that that makes a lot of sense, I mean, I've driven the entire thing, it's not very, uh, but we have the opportunity to work it in to our ordinances and fit it the best that we can with the restrictions.
Senator, any thoughts?
Yeah, I think working with, with the straight-line double level ordinance is, I think, I think a permit-by-permit is, yeah. Leaves us a lot of questions to deal with, I know, and I think that the framework they provided answers a lot of the questions. Or I...
My concern is that their ordinance, their recommended ordinance could potentially stem on rights of citizens that currently own those properties, and there's very likelihood that we could be caught in a lawsuit if that comes to bear some crap in my opinion as to how hard it is right now. You know, I'm not a law expert, obviously, but at my heart, I believe that they have researched all that, what they completely require us to do to cover that interest on this south visitor, some kind of pressure, so I'm, I'm less inclined to give my, my personal blessing on ordinance as stand, if that makes sense. I'm more comfortable taking things that was least amount of liability out of that than equalling what we can, because I honestly have a feeling that there's to be some significant changes to this quarter, and I don't wanna get us dug into a hole that if we are getting dug out of, if that makes sense. But I don't know how they're gonna set that out.
I think, uh, Counselor Dick made a really good point that we are a ordinance-driven council, and everyone, we have the opportunity to come in here and say, we're revoking this ordinance, we're changing this ordinance, the, the changes to the development code, those take longer, um, but the, the issue before us tonight in choosing one of these three is really just a statement of this is our plan ahead, and then that plan ahead could be slow, it takes some time, and it has room. Um, I hear exactly what you're saying, though it does put us in a position that we don't wanna be in. Um, I do know that a lot of work has went into making sure this code is, um, objective to the law's definition, um, and then as it's coming down from the federal government to the state, we've had their eyes on it as well, that doesn't mean we have to agree with it, but it is...
Mayor King, I could call, Counselor and Parker, which doesn't have anything to visit up.
Okay.
Yeah, and then we also have a...
I'm gonna, I'm gonna get into our question, then.
Um... I have a lot of concerns about just directly implementing their model ordinance as-is, and I agree with Counselor Shields, I think that it will probably change a lot as time progresses with what's required, and hopefully in conversations with state representatives and how Oregon works. Um, I, I understand the risk of the temporary moratorium, but looking at our map, are there many buildable lots in the floodplain that that would even affect if we were to do a temporary moratorium for the few months it takes us to get to? for the few months it takes us to get to where we put it in place? Is my question.
Think to be now in July.
Yeah.
I will say there are not a lot. And so where I've seen some cities push for it tend to be like coastal cities or cities with lots of floodplain where, you know, they're going to see several permit applications in the flood. We haven't had any since I've been here. And so I, I'm not sure that there's, there's.
And then. Oak Street's already been approved with any of, but they are no longer included.
Yeah, so Oak Street, first off, they've already been approved, so no like standards can be reapplied to them. But they also.
Reassess.
Were able to, yeah, reassess the floodplain and keep all of their housing out of the floodplain area.
Which that is something that any floodplain owning property owner came to. Not have it changed, but have it assessed.
But it is part of this pre-implementation compliance measure. FEMA has put a freeze on any of the blood of map amendments. So Ambios was processed before that freeze started, but adding fill or doing other things to change the floodplain or to kind of change FEMA's guidance. There are still some pathways there, but they're more limited. And FEMA specifically is not processing them right now.
We're the only agency that.
Yes.
So I'm just wondering if it's really that risky to implement a moratorium for a few months while we assess it? Or flush out what, how the ordinance will look at us? But is it more, is it more risky to tell people point blank, you can't do this than it is to implement something that would work on? I just think of the staff time it's going to take also to draft, I need to go through, go through all of it. So are we just adopting as soon as and then working?
No, so my understanding that will be work for the planning commission, the planning staff. They will, we could have a joint meeting if there's interest in that, but we work through it. There's obviously things that we need to say in there. We'll need to take a look at our current floodplain development stuff. And then once we have it drafted, then due to the 35 days, they need to.
So we're just telling them now?
Yes, so today we just need to tell them what the council's decision was. And we have until June, actually. The goal is for it to be implemented prior to July 1st?
Prior to July 1st, yes.
By July 1st. So we do need to go back and say, well, it takes 35 days for this, 45 days for this, two weeks for mailing this.
So what does it look like if this is what comes out and by?
Then they'd be subject to our current development code and we wouldn't take the risk of life or risk associated with that.
So if we were to get to the middle of June and know that we weren't going to hit the deadline, then we could consider a temporary moratorium while we kind of hurry things.
So that might be something to consider. But after the council makes a decision tonight, it will be notified in six weeks.
Largely just FEMA. FEMA needs to know which way we're going to work on, work toward, and then and then from there, right, it could to staff to to put the draft together, get a legislative amendment put together and then, and ready.
As much as it's comfortable and responsible, I'm okay with not rushing forward because I really think there's a lot of movement and there's going to be changes to this. I don't think we push through something that's not a good fit for our city because we feel the pressure because it's very obvious to a lot of people that we need to change, which does not always need to change, but it's very workhorse. So I think it is important that we make a decision. Have you go tonight on a way ahead? And then what that looks like will be an updated meeting with the reception of what it hurts. So for questions on a temporary moratorium, does counsel feel like that's something that we need to do now in July? I'm most comfortable with not, and not seeing it going really against us. So does anyone have a motion on any of these three issues?
Send it to direct staff to work to implement the provided model.
Okay, I have engagement. Direct staff to work to implement the provided model ordinance. Any further discussion? All of those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed, please signify by saying no. Motion passes. That is just the beginning step, but if we've done, we'll begin to board this thing. So thank you for that. That was our last item of new business, so we'll move into department reports. We'll start off with our city administrator report.
I do just want to start off by reiterating huge thank you to Tasha. She keeps us running very smoothly and has saved me several times with grants and keeping track of other documents. Her record keeping and everything is flawless. And so the auditorium just officially confirms that, but thank you, Tasha. Other than that, I'm trying to think if there's anything major in here to call out. I did have a couple of other questions that have come up since writing this, just smaller questions. One, the National League of Cities is asking cities throughout the nation to join in on a letter that would be sent to Congress to ask them to resupply FEMA's budget after all of the hurricanes and everything in in the southern United States. Is there interest in that, in putting that letter together and bringing it? Or figuring out how exactly to sign on?
There is a letter that they've asked for my signature. Do you have that?
On a asking elected officials to sign on to a letter urging Congress to pass a clean supplemental appropriation to fund and replenish depleted disaster assistance accounts. Specifically, they're asking Congress to fully fund the FEMA recovery, FEMA's recovery efforts for recent and future disasters, replenish small business administration disaster assistance loan program, ensure tier one funding for economic development administration response programs, and then a few others, so providing flexible funding or increased funding for certain programs of people impacted by major national disasters. This is, there is a sign-on form open in the deadline to add your signatures midnight on November 13th. That's something we can add our signature to, unless there's any opposition.
Is there interest or opposition?
I don't have any opposition.
I don't have any interest.
So I have the ability to just fill out a.
It looks, yeah, it looks like it's just asking one of us to sign on if you're interested.
I had the invitation up here. It is to do a code meeting. So I have the meeting to do that. So also she has only made sure not to sign her name. But I just wanted to make sure that there is not opposition. I do represent the city of Kansas. At least Kansas is always good. Anything else pressing then?
Quick question on signs on utility poles. It is against development code ordinance that they're there, that they're not supposed to be there. But I just want to know how proactive counsel wanted us to be in getting rid of those.
And that's the other thing, we're getting a little bit of heavy.
A little bit heavy. Our sheriff's deputy, under Sheriff Allen, called it out and asked, asked if I would like him to spend his time on that. Or if counsel would like.
If he doesn't.
I'd say I would leave it to the judgment, right, to, but. It was mostly that he had noticed them and taken a similar version to them.
I'm saying that the corner of training issues is getting a little trashy looking.
Yeah, so I also think there's no opposition in. In his judgment.
If we spend time and are a little more proactive on removing those signs.
Yes.
I think not to go out of its native nature, but just a few frames, pass it by in half a second.
Yep.
Sure.
And I think what he does actually tries to contact the person that has put it up and just.
The bottom of the, yeah. One thing that I just wanted to let everyone know, Val, there's an elected essentials training. This is put on by, I believe, Morgan Cities, basically every election cycle. It's free. They go through like public meetings law, how a city council is supposed to run, all of the, all of the kind of basic integral things. If you're interested in that training at all, Region 3's training is set for November 19th. I know that's a Tuesday from 8 to 5 in Silverton. And then they have a catch-all on February 5th, 2025 in Salem. I don't know what day.
Very informative.
I don't know the day of it.
It's really, really helpful.
I'm saying there's a big long list of topics that they cover. They all looked incredibly valuable. I would probably attend the February 5th one. Unfortunately, my calendar was already booked for November 19th, but.
How, can you hear the council's in my name?
I would be interested in the next year if I can wrinkle it down.
Yeah.
February 5th isn't.
Do you have that? What day of the week?
It's a Wednesday.
Wednesday.
It's a Tuesday.
You just let me know and I'm happy to get you registered either self or Tasha.
I would highly recommend it. And then if you know you're not able, but interested, on the LEAP ordinance website, there's also other trainings and information available. Or I can probably even take mine or call me free comments. It is a lot of good information.
The last thing that I just wanted to quickly call attention to. Tasha and I noticed that our January, the first Wednesday of January is January 1st. Our hope and assumption is that we move to January 8th, but just wanted to note that.
Everyone, that one there, schedule.
Just the Wednesday after instead of on New Year's Day.
City Hall will be closed that day, January 1st.
Okay, got it, okay.
And then we'll make sure that goes out in December newsletter as well. Anything else for us, Nathan, or are there any questions for us to mention? We have the city reporter report. Do you have anything to add? Any questions for us?
Thank you for your work on the harvest room.
Thank you for your volunteer.
But with work, select report, city, engineering building report, city attorney and planning report, any questions, comments?
I had a question on the. The.
Somewhere.
Somewhere I had a question.
I know. It might have been the attorney's report. I had a question on something. It was the colleague report. Where is it? Oh, what do we have going on with food carts?
It's the mingle, Amity Mingle.
Oh, okay.
Questions about development that can be done.
All right, thank you. I just was like, what are they doing with food carts? Thank you.
Yes.
The initial request was wanting to fill out a food cart saying we've really worked with the individual.
Gotcha, okay. Thank you. I just, I saw that on there and I thought, what is that?
If there are strong feelings about food carts, it is worth noting that if I'm not aware of any current city code on food carts. So if there's strong feelings, we can work on being preemptive, but.
That's fine. I just, I just saw the pop fill and wondered, I missed something completely.
No, that was, that was just a pre-application before this one.
Okay, thank you.
So as of right now, as it stands, food carts will be subject to the same traffic and ordinance as we have. Be the same as in movable structure on a lot. And then we'll move on to business from Mayor and City Councilors. Comments for the good of the order, Counselor Bethany?
Well, just as this, just as you follow me, the election results just stepped in again. So I was just looking at our.
Their unofficial notice you can find.
I know. So I'm just saying that, you know, we have our things out there and we'll see how they go. And, yeah. I have nothing personally on there. Natasha, are you going to cover anything about tree of giving information? Do you want to cover anything on that, that you could cover about?
Definitely.
Yes, please.
Auxiliary is doing the tree of giving this year. I got some flyers hung up around town. It's on Facebook. Yeah.
So for the fire department, they're doing the tree of giving this year. There'll be applications available at city hall?
City hall, which I have ready to go. I've already received a couple of applications. And Laura and I, as they're coming in, just check, pulling up, make each other. And Amity, it's only open to Amity residents only. So just confirming then. The tax will go to First Federal on 25th of November. And they'll have their tree up by December 2nd. But anyone who go get taxed from First Federal to November 23rd, no, 25th. And November 23rd, we're doing, we're doing the city municipal fire hall, taking applications as well.
So if anybody asks, applications are available in city hall, but it is not sponsored by city hall. It's sponsored by the fire department.
And then Wes, I'm really efficient. Is there any plan for Amity Day meeting?
You know, that is an excellent question and I wanted to talk to you about that and see what we're going to do about that.
Okay, so probably upcoming in the next few months. Do you just want to do anything in the first?
Yeah, yeah, it is still online, less because we really never did have a hold on it.
I just want to make sure that it's on the calendar for the near. Anything else or any questions for our president? Counselor Morris?
I will be traveling on the next city council meeting, so I will not be here. I will be traveling on the next city council meeting, so I will not be here. But I have a thing to add.
Thank you for that.
Just a little bit, just a little bit, and take the view on it next week, council meeting.
I just have to make sure we have more, otherwise we can't do any other. Councilor Parker, anything for the good of the order?
She wrote enough, she said that she had nothing to add, sorry, I have a lot to do tonight, signing off, have a good evening.
Okay. Councilor Shields, anything for the good of the order? Do you have anything else?
Nope. Okay, I have a quick list, I've just been running down them. So we did the harvest party, it was great, thank you staff and volunteers for everything, it was a lot of fun. It was raining day, I think that kind of brought down attendance, but everyone here really enjoyed it, so I think it's over forever. We held the, okay, decorated contest, thank you, Councilors Thompson and Porcas and Milla and Tasha for helping out with that. And got prizes, pictures. I love presenting, a little gift from chief gift card to the winners, everyone is still happy with it. So I love it, it's something that's just citywide, everyone will want to sign up, it's just expected to happen. I would highlight that David Dig, thank you, Councilor Porcas, for taking the lead on that, that's David representative as well. Because I heard the death of wolves coming up actually on the town for free, so that is a countdown improvement in my eyes. Nathan and I have the opportunity to meet with Maria Pope today, who's the president and CEO of P G E. It was a good conversation, she has a lot of knowledge, she had a lot to tell us about. We talked about the, what seems to be a percent increase in recent, forty-two percent over the last two years. P G E found themselves in a lot in the same situation that Amity was in, where the infrastructure always definitely wants to end major investments. We, I personally have heard a lot that it was, that needing to be clean energy goals were needing to. And really this is a high strapping factor, just keeping their infrastructure, their physical infrastructure upgraded to current needs and not letting it get deficient. And so I also asked, they, I believe it is another four percent increase, circa seven, within four with the Oregon Utilities Commission right now coming in January. Their hope is, they're working through negotiations with that, their hope is to settle on a two percent increase, and this is coming from P G E, and keep it at that way moving forward. So they, their goal is to keep it at that small, hard increase moving in because they feel like they have gotten to a point where they're moving ahead with stability. That's not a promise, that's a hope, but I was glad that you came, we're able to talk a lot about Amity, what we're doing, what our needs are, our residents' needs are. So just thankful for the opportunity. I thanked P G E for their donation towards the Amity Day. And they plan to do that again, as well as having a physical presence there, but I told them what, you know. It made a significant difference in being our first year, and how much we appreciated it, and they said that moving forward just to expect about something they want to be part of. Nathan and I met with Beth Watauski, the Rachel Solutions Coordinator, I think he had that in his report, that was good, he had, I can't remember if I did or not, but that was a good conversation, just talking about our wastewater needs, where our water needs are at, and then also community facilities, because that's a conversation we've had. We also met with Kelly Halligan at U S D A, because there's U S D A community facility grants and loans that if we are thinking about moving forward in the next five years, looking at some of those federal funding opportunities, it is a pathway that's going to get us a library or community space or city hall. And so just having that conversation, kind of seeing what that looks like, and kind of adding to the list of like, when we're ready to take a step, what are our possibilities? And then last but not least, the sign for Thatcher Street that is near church is horrendous, it's falling over and you can't see what it's got. It is, I know, I don't make the rounds all over town, I happen to be going that way because of the Thatcher Street detour. But anyone, if you see something that seriously needs replacement, if we could just let staff know, I'm letting you know, I don't expect it's going to happen.
Sign for, which sign exactly?
That.
Thatcher on?
It's on just.
Okay, Thatcher, no, it's in.
Yeah.
It looks like you could push it over.
I was gonna say, it's raining.
But that's the kind of thing that if we can let city staff know, it gets on a public works list, and when they're going to want to get to it, they will. Because that looks like one of those kind of places.
Is there any questions or anything else for the good of the order?
I do want to mention at the harvest party, the sheriffs also had a table and had handed out free gifts, and that was a welcome addition to the harvest, because it's great.
If there's anything else, I'll ask for a final motion of leave.
Motion. Motion to adjourn, sorry.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed to adjournment? Meeting adjourned, thank you.